Hey, I think we'll like this candle. I call me in order.
I apologize to regions to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic of which it demands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with your roll call, please.
President Dunne.
Here.
Vice President Everard.
Here.
Professor Gaten.
Here.
Secretary Fritz.
Here.
Cessie Thomas. Here. Cessie Zimmerman.
President.
Cessie Wazore.
Here. Okay, thank you. We'll do the conservation ethic.
Okay, conservation ethic, goal six to foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us regardless of the basis of our interest in nature to develop a greater awareness of our role and responsibility for the total community of life. A conservation ethic asks us to assume some need to educate about conservation issues and then act on that information. A conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving natural heritage of the county's open space. Goal number five, to assure sufficient integration of key district functions, educational services, site planning, land and facilities management, and natural resource management to maximize the overall effectiveness of the district.
Great, thank you. Pat, will you do the conservation?
Sure. We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully developed cities and towns, a strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number six, we both part and hope for a future more closely defined with the natural world.
Great, thank you. Now, we'll adopt the agenda. Do you entertain a motion to do that?
Motion to adopt the agenda as is.
Okay, in second, in first and second, then. Ray, in line.
Secretary Fritz.
Yes.
Cessie Zimmerman.
Yes.
Cessie Thomas.
Yeah.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Cessie Wazore.
Yes.
Professor Gaten.
Yes.
President Dunne.
Yes. All right. We're going to move right along to the special recognition and presentations. Okay, first one is to Chief King. And I'm gonna have you help me over here. I'm trying to leave it. That's pretty small for what we have alone. Uh, it's the resolution of appreciation for the dedicated service of Laura L. V. King. And it's McHenry County Conservation District officers and board of trustees unanimously, unanimously adopted on November twenty-fourth of 2023. What do you want to read the verse?
Sure. Whereas McHenry County Conservation District has protected over 25,754 acres of open space and 35 conservation areas, 45 miles of regional trails that provide access to more than 115 miles of an integrated trail network, acts to restore its lands to their ecological health, offers educational programs which encourage appreciation of the natural environment and a fundamental understanding of the environmental ethic, and develops its lands for the safe, quiet enjoyment and interests of McHenry County residents. And whereas the district is supported in its efforts by many dedicated staff and volunteers who engage in a variety of activities, including protection of natural resources, the flora, fauna, and people who share them, site and facility maintenance, and improvement, natural area restoration, trail clearing, and monitoring, wildlife monitoring, and here, environmental, historical, and cultural interpretation, educational outreach programs, and many other endeavors. And whereas Laura V. King began with the district as the chief of police in January of 2019 and brought with her more than 20 years of experience with law enforcement in McHenry County. And whereas Laura V. King has provided excellent leadership skills as the chief of police, brought a spirit of team and interdepartmental cooperation, and has provided valuable insight, professional expertise, and positivity to staff volunteers and members of the public forging friendships along the way.
Whereas Laura L. V. King, in her first year, oversaw the rapid case closure of horrific and choking injuries, injury, crime to a site user, whereby the assailant was arrested within 48 hours and ultimately convicted. And whereas Chief King has guided and supported numerous staff initiatives and was the driving force for the department's wellness approach, encouraging use of physical and emotional wellness tools and techniques, including a schedule that resulted in both a better work-life balance and promoting workout routines, which ultimately put the district in a position to win a top award for the officer's safety and wellness from the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund. And whereas Chief King was elected to the position of president of the Illinois Chiefs of Police Association. And whereas Chief King has played a key role in planning and implementing department operations, restructuring, and improved effectiveness, including evidence processing, storage cameras to extend police presence and increase officer time in sites, reduction of administrative redundancy and policy revision, ultimately securing the district as the ILEAP president. And whereas for nearly five years, Chief King has gained the immense satisfaction in seeing the evolution of the officers and sergeants into a competent, cohesive team, witnessing employees, increased productivity, healthier lives, and personal growth into better officers, better leaders, and model example of how a department should function. And whereas Chief King has decided to retire from law enforcement effective October 2nd of 2023, let it be resolved that the officers and the board of trustees of the McHenry County Conservation District hereby express and convey their deep and sincere gratitude and heartfelt appreciation through Laura L. V. King for her continued dedication to the mission of the district. And that this resolution be incorporated into the official records of the district and that Laura L. V. King receive recognition through this resolution. And witness thereof, uh, the board is signed to the resolution. And, uh, thank you for helping, and Chief King, if she had.
So we need a motion, the second on the resolution.
Okay.
And then we'll.
May I entertain a motion? We gotta. Pat made a move. It's a second, Ryan, second, uh, resolution. Roll call, please.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Cessie Zimmerman.
Yes.
Professor Gaten.
Yes.
President Thomas. Yeah, Secretary Fritz.
Yes.
Cessie Wazore.
Yes.
And President Dunne.
Yes. All right.
Thank you.
All right. I wasn't sure if you were out there or not.
I am, I am. Thank you so much, and I'm sorry I'm not there with you tonight. Um, uh, this new job has been something else. And I, I really, I, all those nice things that, um, were said in the resolution just really touched my heart. Um, I think you all know it was really hard for me to make the decision to leave, but I felt like, ah, the agency was in really good shape and Ryan was ready for leadership, and I kind of felt like my work was done. Uh, so far, absolutely, um, I'm not gonna use hate, that's a very strong word. I really, really don't like my new job. I'm hoping it's, it's just that I in the transition, I'm hoping it's just growing pains in the transition. But, uh, oh, more, more nights than not, I wish I never left. So, um, thank you all, and I miss you all, and, uh, I am gonna find a way to stay involved. Uh, you guys have a really, really great and special place there.
Well, don't be a stranger. We wanna see you once in a while, so that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you for all.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
They, sort of tell it, or it, it, all it can do is get better.
That's quite a cut cut.
That was a lot of reading you. Thank you for the help.
Especially with the glare.
Yeah, exactly. That was. We're gonna need some help on some of these, if it'd be helpful to do that.
Sure.
Seven point two.
So this next is the recognition of Christine Coustra. Uh, she has received certification as a certified interpretive guide. And Becky Lambert, I believe you're on, and Wendy Corr from the division, uh, is here. So does anybody wanna make any comments? I don't see Christine on. But we're just pleased that's another team member that received that certification.
And what does the certification do, and what, what is that?
Interpretive guide.
Interpretive guide. Becky, are you on? Do you wanna provide a few comments about that?
Just a little explanation.
Um, this is a, it's, so, um, there's IPRA and NRPA, those conferences you're familiar with. So the educators have their own, um, certification and models. And this is just another certification that says she's amazing.
So the natural interpreters, a lot of times when they're teaching programs, the way they facilitate the storytelling and engage the audience that is there, there's a particular skill set that they use to master.
Okay.
Uh, and very much you see it done with the National Park Service and others. And so this skill set through educational programming just makes it a very enriching, engaging experience. And so we're grateful that this is a commitment so that our residents and those guests that join us have that enriched.
Excellent.
Well, I think they did the maple syrup. So I was there, she did a great job. I wasn't sure because she was all bundled up.
Yes, I was there also, yeah. So, great, well, congratulations. Thank you, Christine.
Very proud of her.
Okay, seven point three.
So our next is the recognition of Kyle Ames. He has recently graduated from the Illinois Park and Recreation Association Professional Development School. Um, this is the second year we've had, each year we've been sending at least two to each class, uh, to join. There's a first-year class, there's a second-year class. They go through doing the cliff and strengths on leadership development, which is the first year with a variety of programs. The second year is an advanced course that they take part in. Um, and through the two years, then they graduate from the program. And so we just are here and very excited that Kyle has gone through that leadership program. Um, others, part of the, the district had achieved that. Caitlin in the border, uh, had also attended, Josh Kitteren had attended. Um, and this year we sent two new team members, Lori Ryan and Steve Savinell. So they'll be going into second year, but we just wanna congratulate Kyle on this achievement. And then also, uh, John Peters, who is our restoration ecologist, serves on the board of regions and helps set the curriculum for the school. So this has been wonderful. We're looking to, this will be the next two, here. But a congratulations to Kyle. Uh, John, I believe you're on. I know you're driving. Anything you wanna say? I didn't see Perry.
Yeah, sure, I could add, uh, can y'all hear me?
Yes, yes.
Uh, yes, uh, a, a couple of years ago, uh, as, as Elizabeth said, we were identifying, you know, the need to bring along, uh, some of the newer team members or younger team members to develop their leadership skills and their leadership ability. And we recognize, as, as, as Elizabeth said, this school is a great step in that direction. And we, you know, we recognized that Kyle, because he's leading a shop up there, uh, we thought it would be a good idea to get him through it, and he went through and enjoyed it, had a great time, and you can see him there with his, uh, award or certificate, uh, of graduation. It's quite a, it's quite a feat. It's very intense, uh, training. Um, and, uh, out of that, uh, at least I developed, uh, when I went through it numerous years ago, uh, a, a, a network, and that's one of the things we've encouraged Kyle to do as well.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Good, well, congratulations, Kyle. And we'll move on to, uh, rec- recognize the, uh, service anniversaries of various people here. The five year, you wanna go ahead and announce that, Elizabeth?
Yeah, so for five years, uh, and again, this is an amazing, uh, group of individuals that have been with us. So we'll start with our five years. We have Jackie Barrow, who's our volunteer coordinator, Shana Plavel, who is our director of, uh, McHenry County Conservation Foundation, uh, Nathan Grow, uh, one of our restoration ecologists, Caitlin Martinez-McWarter, for five years, who is our, uh, marketing manager, Larry Nichols, who is our, uh, building supervisor, Deborah Hedrick, and Patty Rosenbaum, who are both our custodians, and then Bob Menard, who is our volunteer coordinator. So they're celebrating five years, and, and we're very excited on their, uh, appreciate their service to the district. Um, they've really fit in and done a great job. I know that, um, they've done amazing things, have grown the programs under their leadership. Bob Menard, I think I shared with you, uh, before, he is going to be retiring, uh, in February. Um, so we wished him well, but again, thank everyone for that. Then celebrating ten years, we have Jake Munch with our, uh, Heart Rangers, uh, and he does, so Jake, uh, is celebrating ten years. Uh, for fifteen years, we have police officer Dan Hibler, um, Kyle Reddick, and then, uh, Chris Zeiner, a restoration ecologist. So, uh, we congratulate them on their fifteen years of service. And then on twenty years, uh, the, the biggest here for, for this year is Sarah Rumble. She is our landscape architect, uh, in our planning and development department. And, uh, appreciate all the, the work that she's done with many projects and, uh, making those experiences in the outdoors available to, to our guests and visitors, so.
Well, congratulations. I think we all want to applaud. Okay, we'll move on to trust me to report, um. Anything you need to bring us down to, to report on?
Yeah, Lloyd. So, uh, Green Drinks this month was, um, hosted by the Illinois Native Preserve Commission. And apparently, am I right on this? So we actually, we provide office for them?
Yeah, we do, yes.
He gave us a shout out for that, so it was good. Anyway, so they talked about what they do, and, and I wasn't aware of their organization, but what they do is they will help, um, a landowner that says, I want to, uh, protect my land so that when I sell it, or once I'm gone and my heirs, you know, or whatever, property, I wanna make sure that the land is protected. Um, which counts, as we look at how much of the county land is, is protected, that counts towards that. So he helps these landowners, uh, from a technical standpoint, just, you know, how to, how to protect their land everywhere from the flora and fauna and all that, and to go through the, the legalities of, uh, getting the land, uh, signed over. So, pretty neat. It was a, it was a very good presentation. Also, attended a kishpen, we did a seed gathering, and it's really neat because, uh, the district and the fen, volunteers for the fen are gonna do the seed swap. And, uh, so they've got their set of seeds, and one of our ecologists is gonna work with it. Actually, he was out there on Sunday, and, uh, they did a burn on Sunday and then collected more seeds. But anyway, that's underway for them to do that, uh, that seed swap. Um, Elizabeth and I attended the economic development dinner for McHenry County. Uh, that was, first of all, they had a comedian, sort of, so riot. And boring presentation, all these, you know, and, and then that guy got up there and he just saved the night. It was, it was really, really good.
So did he roast Scott Forge?
He, he did, now, that got in a point of bed, yeah. The guy.
Is that where this is at, Scott Forge?
The Scott Forge guys, you know, they were all, different tables had different, you know, represented for different companies, and the Scott Forge guys all wore these bright, uh, you know, shirts.
By jackets.
Titans. Pardon, I couldn't think of the word. And, uh, you know, and he just looked around, and this guy just picked on things. So he drove around, uh, he drove around Crystal Lake, he goes, there's more Walgreens and CVS. You guys, are you all ill? And what do you get all these drug soldiers for? He said something about the economic development. It's, it's convenient that they have their offices in the mental health community. They don't all for them. Then he picked on, he had no idea that the Scott Forge guys had to wear the jackets. So he literally goes, do you guys have to wear those jackets? And you're like, yeah. Anyway, it was, uh, it was a worthwhile, uh, program and a chance to go next year.
Where was that at?
It was at the Holiday Inn.
Oh.
One hundred and forty people.
Oh, gee.
That was a big deal. It was, uh, it was something else. So, um, and then lastly, the, the foundation held their strategy plan meeting, and, uh, Elizabeth and I both attended that, and, and they're, they used our projects as a part of it, and they're setting forth their plan, polishing it, and they have, should have something to show us here in a couple of months.
Excellent, good. Okay, anybody else have anything to report?
I went to Farm Bureau pretty quiet, just, you know, that was cool.
I mentioned, uh, I don't know if you want to include that about the fever problem.
Oh, yeah, I had, I, I got a call, so then I called, uh, Creosin.
That time of year?
Yeah, yeah. Well, when you get out there, then you, you see all the flooding, you know.
Yeah, so, hopefully, you know, it sounds like staff's gonna be jumping on.
They've been on it for two and a half weeks now.
Yeah, yeah, right. Just gotta put out the fires, I guess, right? Yeah.
And one, one last comment. It's kinda like, since I'm the only farmer on the board, I get all the calls. A lot of people.
Thank you.
You're the go-to guy.
Yeah.
All righty. Uh, John, anything to report as we, um?
So we had our call last, last week, same day, Thursday. Uh, today we're voting on our budget.
I saw that in the paper, yeah.
Yeah.
So, which will be.
It sounds like it's pretty, gonna be pretty close.
I think it is gonna be very close, yeah. Yeah.
Or the, yeah.
I, I think that there will, I, I don't think that we'll take the full two percent. It'll probably be, um, one, maybe one nine of the CPI, and then no new growth or a variation of that, but, uh, we don't need it. We have seven and a half months of reserves and four million that we're putting into future funds for transportation, but we won't really, so it'll be interesting on a free four-pack next month.
Yeah.
I'll let you know if there's a big drought or complaint.
Chris, I've got, I forgot, I got the foundation being, uh, report. We met last night, the foundation. They, they are, they've come to some conclusions and, and made some decisions on some things. About a year ago, and they've been agonizing for a year. Whether they become a charity or do they stay the type of program they are now. It's, it's, the biggest difference between it is, is that they become a charity, um, people with 401Ks can actually donate directly to it, uh, to the foundation, where they can't do it now. So there's more restrictions on, on the money. Also, the restrictions on how they can use the money. So it's, they have a lot more flexibility if they become a charity. And so they've had legal review, look at it, their finance person recommended it a year ago. They finally voted last night to, to move forward until long as their donations are more than thirty-three and a third, uh, spread out. Uh, you know, they can't have one big donor that, that handles the whole thing. So their numbers are really good. It, uh, was thirty-four percent, excuse me, twenty-three was forty-four percent. So they're, you know, they're way over that.
Three people, there were go- different donors?
Yeah.
Oh, and you're.
Forty percentage, so, so, so almost half of their money is coming from multiple donors.
Oh.
So they're, they're well above the threshold of that thirty-one percent. So the motion that was passed was, so long as in twenty-four, they're still over that thirty-three threshold. It shouldn't be an issue. So anyway, that, that's a big change. Um, they accepted a restrictive covenant for the, the, the forest, uh, for those, uh, carbon credits, sequestration. Um, so that's gonna directly impact us with, with funds as that land comes over. So that's a significant, uh, event that they, they voted for in favor last night. Um, and then they have two new board members, whose names will be coming here for us to review. And lastly, they're, they're changing their, right now they meet every two months, and they're gonna meet monthly going forward, was the decision from last night.
Good, good, all right, thank you.
Good people on that board.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, the only thing I have to report is that we're gonna have, uh, after this, this meeting, we'll have a decennial, uh, committee meeting for all of us here. Uh, that'll take place after this meeting. Uh, public comments? Do we have anybody out there?
I haven't seen anyone raise, or anybody on the panel.
Also, one, one quick comment too, is, uh, uh, staff and myself are getting together next week. Be sure to go over the snowmobile situation, and, um, hopefully, it's something figured out. Oh, God. All right, uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda. You wanna take over?
Okay. I move to approve the consent agenda. Uh, twelve point one, approval of minutes of previous meetings, twelve point one A, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, committee of the whole, last executive session. Twelve point one B, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, committee of the whole. Twelve point one C, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting. Uh, treasuries report, twelve point two A, acceptance of the treasuries report for October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three as presented. Twelve point two B, general fund budget variance report, six months ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Twelve point three, resolution twenty-three dash ninety, accepting the conservation fee, finance feasibility study prepared by the trust for public land. Twelve point four, resolution number twenty-three dash ninety-one, authorizing a contribution of twenty-five thousand dollars to the trust for public land for their technical, technical assistance with the conservation finance feasibility study. Twelve point five, ordinance twenty-three dash ten thirty, authorizing the transfer of funds between fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget line item GL zero one dash oh four dash four fifty-five, ten thousand dollars. GL one dash ten dash four ten, five thousand dollars, and GL oh one dash ten dash four eleven, thirty-two hundred, and GL oh one ten four fifty-five, thirty-eight hundred. To GL oh one dash ten dash forty-eight, four eighty-eight, in the general fund, in the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars. Twelve point six, authorization to prepare specifications and lead bits for the purchase of two new slash unused six-foot mechanical seed harvesters to cultivate a seed. Twelve point seven, resolution twenty-three dash ninety-two, warding a contract to A Jewels Construction LLC, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for the Perry Trail Harts Road pedestrian crossing project for a cost not to exceed forty-eight thousand eight fifty-six. Resolution twelve point eight. Uh, resolution number twenty-three dash ninety-three, ratifying the execution of a contract to Constellation New Energy, uh, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for electric service at fifteen districts locations, or an amount based on the twelve-month index per kilowatt hour for one year beginning November twenty twenty-three. Twelve point nine, resolution number twenty-three dash ninety-four, affirming the executive director's execution of change order number two, the amount of twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars with Fowler Enterprises LLC for Bishop Park demolition and football building, intern residence, and field safety project. Twelve point one zero, resolution twenty-three dash ninety-five, authorizing the executive director to execute the agreement documents with Illinois Fire Service Institute to provide both the S slash one thirty field day and S slash two nineteen ignition operations trainings. Uh, twelve point eleven, resolution twenty-three dash ninety-six, ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency's green infrastructure grant opportunities, the amount of two hundred forty-six thousand six seventy-eight point oh eight, assisting funding the, um, Bolger Bog hydrology project at Bolger Bog Conservation Area. I think that's right. Uh, twelve point twelve, resolution twenty-three dash ninety-seven, reporting trustee Sean Zimmerman as the district's official delegate, treasurer Ray and Gay, Gaten Junior as first alternate, vice president Lloyd Everhard as second alternate, executive director Elizabeth S. Kessler as third alternate for the IAPD annual business meeting on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Good. You've made it. Okay, now, okay, now we need, now we need the motion. We need a second.
Second.
Linda, second it, and we need a roll call, please.
Cessie Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Fritz.
Yes.
Cessie Thomas. Yeah, Cessie Wazore.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Professor Gaten.
Yes.
And President Dunne.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll turn it over to you, and I'll go.
Right, first one is thirteen point one eight, uh, internal audit. Did anyone have any items to be pulled?
We did.
We did.
Uh, and I didn't. Uh, and I didn't, that's how you print it out.
I haven't.
You haven't.
Yeah, if you wanna go over it and identify out loud the.
So we have, uh. Is the H, the? Oh, here, fill them, but is this vendor number one one eight nine five four? Winter Landscapes? But the vendor number.
So that would be the line item number.
Okay. Oh, is this their number?
And this, the team keys, this they can be requested.
Yeah, the.
Okay.
The items, the individual vendors that wanna be pulled.
So this is head press. Line item, the date and then the amount.
Got it.
For the landscapes.
Okay.
And then that's the name of the. For this item.
Yes.
Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I was.
No, no, no.
Trouble deciphering what I was reading there.
If you've never seen it.
What we do.
Unusual.
All right, so we had uh trustee Zimmerman request uh details on uh head press for the line item eleven eighty-nine fifty-four. Uh, winter twenty twenty-three landscapes in the amount of uh fourteen thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. Um, Cindy Jablonski for Work Pants Deer Colling Supplies. Uh, and the amount of fifty-six dollars and twelve cents. And Johnson Tractor uh for a pendulum seed spreader in the amount of five thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Hey.
So. Pull those, Andy, I knew you were working on that.
We, I sent the proposal all through, I didn't see it immediately.
Yeah, so it just came in through, so we will get all that together and report back. But yeah, the typical process, you pull it here, we come by next time, we'll report back on.
Yep. Um, next item is the uh make a motion to approve the payment of bills as indicated on the submission of bills pending report for the month ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
So the move and seconding.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Wendorick.
Yes.
Secretary Fritz.
Yeah.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vendor Gayton.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
And President Dom.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Ray. That covers that. We move on to thirteen point two, which, Elizabeth?
Well, we've got, uh, we did the presentation of HR, uh, went over the final report uh last Thursday evening at the Committee of the Whole. Um, this action does have multiple steps or parts to the motion. And so we've identified um what is proposed, and so I'll leave it to the board to to move it forward and be able to answer any questions.
Okay, so do we wanna go back over the each alone or?
Well, you either can do it as, if you one by one or do it in one, I wrote it as one motion, but again, it's just where the board is and that's up to your, whoever wants to move and how you wanna do that.
Okay.
Yes, I'll move that we approve section thirteen point two, classification and compensation study, final report.
Okay, second that, okay, great, and first, second it.
I wanna read the, let's go ahead and read the motion out loud.
Everything's up motion. Consideration of a motion to adopt Resolution Number Twenty-three Dash Ninety-eight, a resolution to one, accept the final report of the classification and comp study prepared and presented by Gulf HR USA LLC of Northbrook, Illinois. Two, adopt the new grade and salary wage structure as presented for fiscal year twenty-four. Three, authorize the Executive Director order of dignity to update the district's job descriptions with the changes as presented. Four, authorize a fifteen-year range adjustment to sixty-five percent of market to address comp comp compression at the midpoint of the salary wage range and promote progression through the new salary wage structure. And five, authorize the implementation of a new grade and salary wage structure and salary wage adjustments as presented with an effective date of December tenth, two twenty-three, for a total estimated cost ninety-four thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars for fiscal year twenty-four and fund from budget resources existing within unanticipated expenses, oh four dash seven nine zero.
Okay, so roll call, please?
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Treasurer Gayton.
Yes.
Secretary Fritz.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Wendorick.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
And President Dom.
Yes. Motion carries. So that was a lot of good hard work and both you and Ron, you appreciate Ron, you're welcome.
There was your pedal on there, Lloyd, so thank you.
All right, we have some budget transfers, unanticipated expenditures, uh, any, you got anything on that?
Uh, no, I mean, it's ordinance basically says it's all part of the, when you've already approved those for the comp study. So it's moving the money from the anticipated into the different expense accounts to afford the ninety-four thousand dollars.
Okay.
I don't, Elizabeth, they need to read that, oh, I need GL account, it's quite a few, because it's every.
They should, they should read it, it's a lot here, but yes, I would go through December. So someone needs to make the motion.
Move to approve thirteen point three budget transfer.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, Linda, uh, we wanna do the consideration of margin, let me read that.
Sure, consideration of margin to pass ordinance number twenty-three dash ten thirty-one and ordinance authorizing the transfer of ninety-four thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars of budget resources within fiscal year twenty-four general budget from GL oh one oh four seven ninety, both unanticipated expenditures and both two, oh one XX two zero one salary, oh one XX two oh two hourly. Oh, one XX two oh three part-time, oh one XX two eight zero FICA, oh one XX two eight four IMRF among the various operating departments of the district.
Hey, thank you.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Wendorick.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Treasurer Gayton.
Yes.
President Dom.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Motion carries, Executive Director's Report, Elizabeth, do you have anything to report on?
Uh, the only thing, and I'll send out reminders, um, the meetings for December are up one week earlier than normal because of the holidays. So the Committee of the Whole is on the fourteenth, and the regular meeting is on the nineteenth. Um, as we begin to pull everything together, I will talk with President Dom to see if in fact we do need two meetings.
We will be out of town.
Which one?
Both of them.
Both of them, Linda will be gone. Thank you for letting us know. Um, some of the items that we have thus far that I'm envisioning that are gonna come forward. Our first readings, if we get back from council on our general use ordinance, um, looking at the e-bikes and motorization. Um, an update to our personnel policy and procedure manual with some of the state legislation laws of the Pay-For-All Act. Um, so that'll be forthcoming. Um, we should have an executive session to provide um on matters of real estate and collective bargaining. And um, but depending on the the time and how how much it is, we may, again, wish to compress that, just do the holidays, but let's stay in touch and.
And 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 you're combining the cow and the regular.
Into one meeting, if that's something the board would like to consider.
Possibility, we.
You know. So we'll know more and to make sure, um.
Three hours loaded with.
Exactly.
Okay.
And then um, we've got decennial, like you said, right after this, which will be wonderful, and there'll be a workshop space tonight's meeting. And we'll go into that once we leave, and then I just wanna wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving for your families and health and wellness and.
Bye, boys.
Thank you.
Is there any update on uh, uh, ECO Pete's negotiations?
We'll have that, yeah, it's starting executive session next month.
All right, we'll move on, uh, I think we've already done the, the series first, go through public comments number two. Anybody out there?
I don't see any hand raised nor anything. Okay, I take that as a no.
Anything else that anybody wants to throw in here at the last minute? Okay, are there any motions to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Good finish your job. Okay, Linda. Second, and second, is there Ron? Take a roll call.
Treasurer Gayton.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Wendorick.
Yes.
Secretary Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
And President Dom.
Yes, being adjourned.